This is, in 2018, we decided we were leasing vehicles because lease rates were extremely low. And so we're making the third payment on this particular truck. So this is a highway department truck and under municipal borrowing, the town has the authority, if you vote against this, to cancel the lease and give the truck back. Of course, I'm sure some of you will want to have your roads paved or plowed, and if we get this truck back, it'll be harder to do it. So I would recommend we approve this. The next article which we're going to have after this is the same thing. So there are two leases, and because they are borrowing, we have to ask you to approve each payment each year. So this is a seven-year loan, and so we'll be doing this for another three years after this.
Thank you. There's been further discussion on Article 14. Ready for the question? Article 14 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $29,000 for the purpose of making the third-year lease payment of the seven-year lease approved by the Warren Article Number 14 at the 2018 town meeting on the highway department's 2019 international ten-wheel dump truck. These monies should come from general taxation. All in favor of Article 14? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Article 14 is passed. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,942 for the purpose of making the third-year lease payment of the four-year lease approved by Warren Article Number 13 at the 2018 town meeting on the police department's 2017 cruiser. These monies should come from general taxation or take any other action relating there to. This requires a majority vote. It is recommended by both the select board and the budget committee. Now have a motion.
No.
And have a second.
Yep.
Thank you. There's been discussion about 15. Ready for the question? Article 15 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,942 for the purpose of making the third-year lease payment of the four-year lease approved by Warren Article Number 13 at the 2018 town meeting on the police department's 2017 cruiser. These monies should come from general taxation. All in favor of Article 15 is read. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Article 15 has passed. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000, excuse me, I wish, $350,000 to be added to the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established. These monies should come from general taxation or take any other action relating there to. This requires a majority vote and is also recommended by the select board and the budget committee. Now have a motion.
No move.
Have a second. There's been discussion.
This may be out of place, but I don't know when else to ask it. Is that the King Brook Road Bridge?
I'm told it's no.
Okay. But all right, my question is, what's up with the King Brook Road Bridge?
I...
It is.
Yes, it is.
It is.
It's the current King Brook Road Bridge.
Okay. So anyway, my question is, what's up with it? What's the step?
Who would like to address?
So the bridges, part of what the town is responsible for is maintaining our infrastructure. And bridges are one of the most expensive parts of our infrastructure to maintain. So last year, two years ago in fact, we voted to redo the King Brook Road Bridge. We found that when we went through that process, it was actually going to be more expensive. So we voted again last year on that particular project. That's going to be $1.4 million. Now, the good thing about that piece of our infrastructure is it's one of the few things that the state of New Hampshire actually helps us pay for. So there's this thing called the municipal red list where a bridge that is failing can be put on this list, and the state will take 80% of the cost of repairing that bridge. So King Brook Road, Stagecoach Road, and the south end of Old County Farm Road are the bridges that we currently have on the red list. So Stagecoach Road was originally approved, or Stagecoach Road was approved for 2021. King Brook Road was approved for 2016, but because of working with the Department of Transportation, we have not got to the point where we have approval to start that. I think we are very confident and very hopeful that that work will happen this year. But the town has to raise the money to pay our 20% in anticipation of getting the state's money. So we have to pay ours first, then the state pays theirs. And so we have put money into capital reserve. This puts some additional money into capital reserve. And then in addition to the three bridges that are on the red list, we have a bridge that we have to pay for all ourselves, and that's at the north end of Old County Farm Road. That bridge is a very pretty but lightly-used drystone arch bridge. It has some historical significance, and so the town believes that that should be protected and safe. In that case, we're building a retaining wall more than actually rebuilding the bridge. But again, that, we consider that a bridge expenditure. And so these $350,000 will be used to pay the 20% portion that the town has to pay on the municipal red list bridges and to pay the costs for Old County Farm Road Bridge. And we already have money assigned for both of those projects, non-lapsing, so this just puts us in a position really to work on the future projects, like the 2021 project, which will be the Stagecoach Road Bridge.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Tiffany Cludier Cabral, East Intermodal Road. Can you tell me the tax impact?
Does anybody have a figure for the tax impact of this item?
It's on the slide.
Ninety-three cents.
I'm told ninety-three cents.
Eighteen thousand.
Per thousand.
I know what the answer is, but I kind of ask anyway. If we can fix the county road bridge, why can't they just fix the King Brook Road Bridge? I mean, they're both dry, stone arch bridges.
So if we want to use that 80% money from the state, we have to fix it in a fashion that the state approves. So it has to be able to support highway loads. It has to be able to, it has to have a 50-year lifespan. And there's a number of engineering requirements for that bridge. That bridge is, among other things, the main road to Kimball Physics. Kimball Physics is a manufacturing company. They have truck deliveries. So there'll be heavy equipment going over that bridge. Employees go over that bridge, and other people go over that bridge as well. It's not just for Kimball Physics, but people that live in that part of the town. And compared, the traffic volume on that bridge will be much higher than the traffic volume on Stagecoach Road. We don't, I mean, on Old County Farm Road, we don't want to spend $1.4 million on Old County Farm Road. The money for fixing the bridge on King Brook is, again, 80% from the state. We're doing it according to state specifications.
Thank you. Further questions on Article 16? Ready for the question? Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $350,000 to be added to the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established. The monies should come from general taxation. All in favor of Article 16 is read. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Article 16 passes. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $750,000 for the final design bidding right-of-way and construction for the replacement of the Stagecoach Road Bridge over Burton Pond Outlet as part of the State of New Hampshire's State Bridge Aid Program. The State of New Hampshire's State Bridge Aid Program will reimburse $600,000 and the balance of $150,000 to come from the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established or take any other action relating there to. This will be a non-lapse-in appropriation per RSA 32-7, Roman numeral six, and will not lapse until the project is complete or by December 31, 2024, whichever is sooner. This requires a majority vote and is recommended by the select board and the budget committee. Now have a motion.
No move.
Have a second. Article 17 has been moved in second. There's been discussion. Ready to vote? Okay. So Article 17 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $750,000 for the final design bidding right-of-way and construction for the replacement of the Stagecoach Road Bridge over Burton Pond Outlet as part of the State of New Hampshire's State Bridge Aid Program. The State of New Hampshire's State Bridge Aid Program will reimburse $600,000 and the balance of $150,000 to come from the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This will be a non-lapse-in appropriation per RSA 32-7, Roman numeral six, and will not lapse until the project's complete or by December 31, 2024, whichever is sooner. All in favor of Article 17 as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Article 17 has passed. Article 18 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,300 for the purpose of building a previously-approved town branded welcome sign on the Lions Club structure on Route 101. The sum to come from the undesignated fund balance. This represents funds from Article 23 approved at the March 2018 town meeting. Article 18 requires a majority vote and is recommended by the select board, two members of the select board with one extension, and by the budget committee with three members in favor, one negative, and one extension.
No move.
Have a second.
Yes.
All right, there's been discussion on Article 18. Thank you. All right, I'm going to recognize Mr. Williams will speak. We'll present what I'm trying to do, and then we'll take your question.
So two years ago at town meeting, we voted in favor of putting up a welcome to Wilton sign on Route 101. That's the main highway from town, you all know. The welcome sign would be a way to tell drivers passing by on 101 that shopping, dining, and entertainment were available just off the highway. For those passing through, it's easy to miss East Wilton. Since the bypass was built in the 1950s, '60s, long before I was here, traffic that used to go through downtown Wilton just flies on by. Long before we moved to Wilton, my wife and I went to Fry's Hesseville. Back then, we always thought Wilton was just the ugly houses in Wilton Center. So the problem was that when we tried to get a place for that sign on 101, we were told we couldn't do that. There was no place that DOT would allow the town to place a sign, and no private property where a sign would make sense. The sign needs to be as close as possible to the Route 31 entrance to Island Street because that's the shortest path to downtown. Meanwhile, the Wilton Lions Club does have the sign on Route 101, their grandfather. It's just past Island Street, of course. And as a Lions Club member, I'm not ashamed to say it does look a little dated. So an agreement was struck with the Lions Club that the town could update the faces of the sign with the welcome information originally planned for the sign we can't put up without affecting the sign's use to advertise community events. This would meet the original goal as submitted at the 2018 town meeting, but would cost less than building a brand-new sign, and we wouldn't need to allocate any new money since the original sign funds went into the undesignated fund balance when they weren't spent. So this is a great example of something that's happening more and more in New Hampshire, a public-private partnership. Please support this article.
We're going to get to you.
Thank you. We'll share time with you. Okay, thanks. I just want to speak on this. I was the one who abstained with the vote. I had several residents come to me and state that they did not want this, the taxpayer money, to be used to upgrade a privately-owned sign. And this is the reason that I abstained, because I had heard from the residents of this town that they did not want this to happen, that the Lions Club, if they wanted to be renovated, they should be using their own money. So that is the reason that I abstained, and those are the reasons that I wanted to give you, so that you could hear both sides, and that is what the residents have stated to me.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll...
I don't understand how we could possibly cost $7,300 to improve an existing sign. I didn't know about the public-private issue, but thank you very much for explaining that so soon. Regardless of what we did two years ago, I think this is an utter waste of money. Oh, I forgot to say, I'm Miss Burnsville Road.
I'm Joanna Extron. I just have two questions. Is this an upgrade or is it a replacement of the Lions sign?
It's an upgrade.
It's an upgrade.
The sign structure would remain, but it would have new colors and new facings and the design that was originally done and presented at the 2018 town meeting.
And my second question is, who will manage the usage of the sign? Who will we contact?
The Lions Club, as always.
Thank you.
Deegan, Grandport Drive, Wilton. I am also a member of the Lions Club. This idea engendered a lot of discussion over the last couple of years. As far as I am aware, nobody from the town or the committee that carried on with this has come back to us since it was rejected the first time to say we still want to do And I personally am opposed, but what it would be would be, definitely be a very big refurbishment of our current sign, and my understanding is that the Lions would still, you know, pay for the permit from the state every year and be in charge of changing the messages and so on and so forth. But, you know, nobody's called us.
North of Bullard, Dale Street, Wilton, Hampshire. I contacted the...
Town administrator.
Town administrator, thank you. Little nervous, sorry. And I had a few questions in reference to the sign. And I asked if the Lions Club was paying for a portion of the new sign, and I was told no. I also asked who would control what is posted on the sign, and the Lions Club, whether it would be the Lions Club or the town, I was told the town. There'll be four lines on the sign, I believe you worded, and the structure would be the same as it is now. And it would be, it would not be electric. It would be what it is. But I also wanted to know who owns the sign. Is it the Lions Club or the town?
The Lions Club.
That's what I thought. The Lions Club owns the sign, but the town now would have to say over what would be put on the sign, which is what, I'm sorry, who would control what is posted on the sign, the Lions Club or the town? And the response was the town.
Unfortunately, yes.
So that is what I was told.
That's an incorrect answer.
Okay.
The Lions Club controls the sign.
All right.
So just to make a point, the Lions Club met last summer after this...
Can you use the microphone, please?
The Lions Club held a meeting, and we voted on whether we wanted to participate with the town in this project. And it wasn't a unanimous vote, but it was a majority vote to do that. So Mrs. Deegan was part of that, but the majority of the Lions Club voted to do the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I speak to one? Yes.
Okay, what Kermit just said is true. However, after that happened, then something went, something happened. The selectmen said we couldn't do it. The town couldn't spend money for some reason. So it had to come back to town meeting. So that's why we're here again. I just wanted to point out, because I forgot to say earlier, and I am still opposed, however, for anybody who's thinking that the Lions are getting something out of this, we didn't ask for this. The Development Committee, what do they call?
Economic Development.
Economic Development Committee came to us because they had no other way to put up a sign. It isn't the Lions Club trying to take your money, trying to take advantage. That is not what's happening here. Okay? It's because the Economic Development Committee wants to use our space. We own the sign, they want to use it. And I would think it's still apparently up in the air, who's going to control what goes on it if Paul thinks one thing and Kermit thinks something else.
So the reason why we are here today talking about this is because the select board decided that because it was a change from what was originally voted on, that we ought to vote on it again. So we put off doing anything until you have a chance to take, to vote on this article again. So again, it's not going to take any additional funds, but however, you have a chance to approve it or not. The, I believe that we haven't really pursued what our detailed policy would be about this sign, and so I think the town administrator is just not aware that the plan is for the Lions Club to continue to do what they do on the sign. But the reason why the proposal was put forward in the first place is because it's the only way that Wilton can have a sign that says, this is Wilton, and if you want to be able to go shopping or go to the movies, you need to come down this way. If you look at Pittaboro, they have signs in their town, Milford has signs in their town. We really don't have anything except maybe the blue signs that DOT puts up, and those are pretty hard to read. So this is the only opportunity we have because DOT is not going to let the town put up its own sign. So again, we looked at the Lions Club sign as an opportunity where Wilton could put its branding on that sign, but the Lions Club would still do what they do with it, which is post-community events, things that nonprofits are doing. And again, there's really no conflict between what they do and what the town would benefit from.
Yes, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, Burnsville Road. Regarding the attraction of people who might be passing by, we've spent a lot of money over the years developing Riverwalks and other attractions to downtown with the idea that they would bring new people downtown and contribute to the revenue of existing businesses. I have asked a number of times and talked to a number of people about where are the data? How much do the downtown residents benefit in terms of increased revenues? And what is the count of traffic on the Riverwalk? How many people who use Riverwalk come from Wilton, and how many people come from away? And is it the reason that the Riverwalk is there that those people from away are in Wilton? Thank you.
Ms. LeBeere.
Alex LeBerman, Green Street. This seems to sound, it sounds like a sneaky way for the town to take over the Lions sign. You don't have a policy. And I strongly urge people to vote against this because they don't have a policy that says who's going to control it. But we know once the town puts in money, they're going to want to control it because their money's there. So it'd be very sneaky.
Were you waiting to speak to this?
Yes.
All right, we have a call question. We're going to let the person at the microphone speak, and then we're going to move on to the questions.
Stuffamillet, Abbott Hill Acres. I would like to say, I, as a member of the Wilton Community Center, we often use the bulletin board to let the community know what's happening, as have a lot of nonprofit organizations in town. I would like to thank the Lions Club for their generosity in allowing us to do this and not charging us for it. It's been a wonderful bit of public relations for all those who take advantage of this. It's a simple process. We drop stuff off with Dick Putnam or any member of the Lions Club. The stuff is put up, the community knows about it, those who pass by know what's going on in town, and it's all thanks to the generosity and kindness of the Lions Club. I don't see any problem or any reason why someone would not fighting over who owns this. This is, it's almost like a little pushin' and brub dig nab dig type of thing. What side of the egg are we going to cut this thing on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you waiting to speak to this?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes, may I have your indulgence for one more?
Hi. Bill Hablex to Matty, I have a little phone matter. I had, you know, one question, one comment. Question is, I'm assuming this is a sign where we're going to add a piece that says about Wilton and still retain a piece that the Lions Club uses.
Excuse me, can I hear?
Sorry. My question is, is I'm assuming, and I hope somebody can tell me if this is correct, that part of the sign would be new, well, Wilton, the other part will remain, Lions Club sign, and they would both exist on the same structure. We would upgrade it so it looked nice. Is that true?
Yeah.
Okay. And the comment is, $7,300 is nothing for a sign. I've worked with companies, worked with dealing with signs, and cost, it's not a lot of money, short money to get something that says, hey, we were proud of our town.
You have something?
I have a question about the sign.
All right, we've got a, Mr. Hughes, would you like to be more, even more indulgent?
One more.
One more, okay, thank you. Yes.
I'm just wondering if the upgrade...
Tell us who you are.
Oh, yeah. Judith Klinghoffer, Town Farm Road. I'm just wondering if the upgrade will increase the visibility of the things that the Lions Club is posting on the sign.
Can you speak up a little bit so we can hear you?
I am wondering if the upgrade to the sign will increase the visibility of the information currently being posted on the sign.
Yes. The letters will be slightly larger.
That seems like a good thing because what the Lions Club is posting are community events to which we want people to come, and if they can see the sign better because it's been upgraded, that is to all of our benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I will let it finish, and then I made the motion to move the question. If you're in favor voting on the question next, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you want to talk more, say no.
No.
Okay, we're going to get to the question now. Article 18 is... Article eighteen is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand three hundred dollars for the purpose of building a previously approved town brand and welcome sign on the Lions Club structure on Route 101. This sum is to come from the undesignated fund balance. And this represents funds from Article twenty-three approved at the March two thousand eighteen town meeting. All favor of Article eighteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose nay.
Nay.
Article eighteen, I think is passed. I have a quick shameless plug for the Florence Wright Elementary and Lineboro Central School, which is hosting a fundraiser this spring where they're collecting new and gently-used shoes. Shoes will go into developing nations for micro entrepreneurs to be able to establish businesses in their communities, all sizes, styles, from stovels to slippers, dress shoes to flip flops. There are several drop-off locations around town. The ones I can read on this are Town Hall, Library, and the Post Office. Article nineteen is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of increasing the stipend paid to the town treasurer to one thousand two hundred dollars per year. If approved, this additional amount will be added to the current stipend in the budget for ensuing years. These monies will come from general taxation, have to take any other action relating thereto. We need a majority vote on this one, and it's recommended by both the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Article nineteen has been moved and seconded in discussion. DJ. Anybody?
My name is DJ Garcia. I'm the town treasurer. Second term was just voted. Thank you all for your votes. Thank you. So, I'm here to speak about Article nineteen and also Article twenty, which comes up right after this. So, it turns out that up until this point, we've spent six million dollars tonight. And four fifty, I feel silly coming up here saying, "Don't vote for four hundred and fifty dollars." I was actually at the Select Board meeting when this was voted on by the Board to approve. And nobody had asked me about it. They didn't say, "Mr. Treasurer, do you need a raise? How do you think it's going? How long have you spent on this?" Quite honestly, there's been very little interaction with the treasury from the Select Board, Town Administrator, Select Board Office. I am the one who regularly comes up and tries to interject myself by being present at all the Select Board meetings, by showing up regularly to do the business of the treasury. I did not ask for this, but the Select Board explained to me, when I went up for public comments at the Select Board meeting, that they had looked around at other towns and determined that the treasurer was underpaid in Wilton by the tune of four hundred and fifty dollars. I can assure all of you in this room that none of you will get out of bed for four hundred and fifty dollars next year to run against me. And I won't stop doing it if you don't pay me another four hundred and fifty dollars. With that being said, if you'd like to know more about what I've done, on page one eleven in this book that I'm holding, I did write the first ever narrative treasurer, so treasurer's narrative, so I'm told. In addition to that, I've done a lot of other things that I hope make you guys happy and proud. With that being said, I want you to vote whatever you think. I think I'm a stand-up guy, but I'm going to do it for the seven fifty that you currently pay me. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, Burnsville Road. I'd like to speak to this, and DJ and I have discussed this before the meeting. I think DJ is more than a stand-up guy. I think he's a treasurer, which has been in his title. I want to speak against this, or a reason I articulated last year when there was a proposal on the floor to grant the Select Board members an eighty-three percent increase. What we're talking about here for DJ is a sixty percent increase. And it's based on, DJ, as I understand it, a comment by the Select Board that this was bringing, that this was bringing it up to par with other communities paying it to their treasury. I object to the scattershot approach to adjusting municipal salaries. If we need to review the municipal salaries, let us do it across the board for all elected officials. And let it, let us do it in a systematic fashion in that we are comparing Wilton to other comparable towns and not towns like, or cities like Salem, or Manchester, or Derry. Thank you.
I just want to address the rationale of something that Ruth has alluded to. We spent the last two years, even the Select Board informing the three years, of doing a systematic review of all town functions, including Town Hall, Police Department, Park Department stipends, GTW, every single aspect of town. And we have used comparable towns, similar in demographics, from population to age groups, et cetera. And that's how we did it. And even though you've rejected the Select Board's phrase, that's fine. DJ certainly deserves this. And this isn't about any one particular person that's in office. This is about the next person that's going to be the next treasurer and paying people what they're worth and making sure that they're fairly compensated. Thank you.
Are you ready for the question? Further discussion? All right. Article nineteen is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We shouldn't be talking about real money. All right. Article nineteen is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of increasing the stipend paid to the town treasurer to one thousand two hundred dollars per year. If approved, this additional amount will be added to the current stipend in the budget for ensuing years. These monies will come from general taxation. All in favor of Article nineteen, as I read it, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose nay.
Nay.
Article nineteen is passed. Yes, sir.
I believe the law and votes can be closed now.
They, they can. And I'm going to take up one more, one more article related to the Deputy Treasurer, and then we're going to close the conference. And take a break. And you can all go back in. Bye, Jay. Okay, Article twenty is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred dollars for the purpose of paying a stipend to the Deputy Treasurer. If approved, this stipend will become part of the operating budget in ensuing years. These monies will come from general taxation and take any other action relating thereto. This is a cause of majority vote and was approved by the Budget Committee and the Select Board. May I have a motion?
So move.
Have a second. Is there a discussion about a hundred dollars? Yes, Ms. Smith?
I, the hundred dollars is nothing. But is it true that Deb is the, Deborah is the Assistant Treasurer? Deputy Treasurer. Why are we paying her a hundred dollars? Doesn't she have a regular salary? Deborah, you working for me?
No, 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 me. Me, I'm the Deputy Treasurer.
Okay.
Okay, DJ.
So, just, just to, again, just echo what I had said before. This is actually one of the tasks that I had done as treasurer in my first term, was get a functioning deputy, which was one of the negative marks from the auditors for two thousand and eighteen. So, that was one thing I addressed. Thank you very much, Deb, for being my deputy. And she has learned from me and also with me, because I'm still learning too. But I, her and I have spoken about this. And again, it was not something that was discussed. I mean, it's a hundred bucks. I mean, I, I don't really know what else I'm supposed to say. So, I just really wanted to fanatize this mic for a hundred dollars.
Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing that, we're ready to vote on Article twenty, which is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred dollars for the purpose of paying a stipend to the Deputy Treasurer. If approved, this stipend will come, become part of the operating budget in ensuing years. And these monies will come from general taxation. All in favor of Article twenty? Simplify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose nay.
Nay.
Article twenty has passed, due to cheap states. We're going to take a break now. We're going to plan the polling close for the board articles, eleven and twelve. We're going to count ballots. And you can be the ones who will vote back.
On gloves?
Thank you.
This is brilliant! I love it!
It's one of the last questions. I know you enjoy it. I can't keep my voice up.
Yeah, my voice is like...
The order of work.
One point, thank you.
I like it.
Yes, to the end there?
Yeah, I'm gonna get my butt beat right now.
Alright, we're gonna go down to the table and everything.
We'll have one more.
Right here, right here.
I bet you made your dad throw up.
Did that happen?
Not yet.
We're still getting air.
Well, I come from the New York, I'm here in the...
So cool! This is brilliant! I love it!
It's one of the last questions.
I know you enjoy it.
I can't keep my voice up.
Yeah, my voice is like...
The order of work.
One point, thank you.
I like it.
Yes, to the end there?
Yeah, I'm gonna get my butt beat right now.
Alright, we're gonna go down to the table and everything.
We'll have one more.
Right here, right here.
I bet you made your dad throw up.
Did that happen?
Not yet.
We're still getting air.
I'm not talking to you.
I'm sorry, your husband is.
Well, I'm not.
They're cooking, they're still busy. I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem? I'm sorry, your husband is.
Well, I'm not.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday. What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?
I'm sorry, your husband is.
They're cooking, they're still busy.
I warned you Tuesday.
Right.
I'm not talking to you.
What's your problem?